Wednesday, November 19th, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Anderson University. We'll call Stacy Adams.
Joe Getton.
Monica Weeks.
Julia Ranaro.
Hi, Derek Brulon.
Jackie LaBavera, the captain. Do we have any public comments on any of the closed sessions? We're going to adjourn the closed session.
Another week or so probably. Yeah, guys have some Thanksgiving lamps on the ground.
I'd like to resume our meeting tonight. We have three point one by crew led by Brian.
Hm, wait. The United States is the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands our nation under God and individual.
Three point two, approve the agenda for regular meeting of the Anderson Union School District Board of Trustees for November nineteenth, two thousand twenty five. Do I have a motion to approve?
So.
Second.
All in favor? Motion passes. Three, three, report out of board action taken in both sessions. We had action on. Two point four, they passed you man then this way. Three, four, student representatives reporting out on athletics, activities and academics.
Good evening, board members and superintendent Mr. Parker. Thank you for having me. My name is Peyton Lindman and I'm a junior at Anderson High School. I'm here to report some updates and events. So some past events, October thirtieth, leadership hosted a Halloween themed boombash. Each grade level had a chance to show off their costumes and win a prize. Leadership works so hard and we receive so many positive feedback. We have over half of our school for this season in dress up work. November twelfth, Anderson's Chamber of Commerce greeters meeting was held in New Tech High School. There was standing room only as it was very well attended at New Tech. New Tech has been invited to provide volunteers and support running more community events as a result. November fourteenth, leadership hosted an indoor movie night raising funds for future school events actively still. Update, we are still currently feeling the loss of our R. Conner. She inspired our art, inspired art in our daily life and we do this over after we are dedicated to building upon her state of life and work hard to make her proud. Our current substitute teacher, Ms. Connor, is working hard with our yearbook team to create a spread dedicated to Miss Boyston. Uh, Miss Boyston would be so happy to also see that we received our new desktop so I can access all graphic design programs that we need for our yearbook and digital media. Uh, enrollment update, we currently have a hundred and forty students, um, thirty nine freshmen, twenty three sophomores, forty eight juniors and thirty seniors. Upcoming event, November, Monday, Monday through Friday, uh, November twenty fourth through the twenty eighth, school is closed for the spirit break. The office will be closed through twenty fifth through the twenty sixth. December event, um, December first through the fifth, NWA winter assessments will be out. December first, eight thirty AM ultimate round will be on campus. December second, we have a spirit day and it seems wide out. December eighth through the twelfth, NWA winter assessments will continue on. Um, December eighth, ask up will be given out to customers and juniors by our representative on campus during hatch. Um, Thursday, the eleventh at eleven AM, non-academic awards assembly will happen. It's a student favorite event and we have awards like the best storytellers, the most positive attitude and most likely to make you laugh. December fifteenth at two PM, Anderson New Tech High School Leadership Advisory Board Title One meeting is happening. December fifteenth through the eighteenth, we have our holiday spirit week. Um, Monday will be ugly sweater day, Tuesday will be Santa first Grinch day, Wednesday will be Christmas cartoon day and Thursday will be holiday. You guys have any questions?
Those are really neat.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your time.
Hello, my name is Lily Jean O'Reilly and I'm the ASP president at Anderson High School. Thank you, board members and district office staff for being here and supporting us. Before I get into updates, I want to take the chance to honor Bob Reed, a true Anderson legend. Bob Reed coached the Cubs from nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy ninety nine. And built Anderson's football program into something special. In his time as a coach, he won four northern section titles and thirteen northern athletic league championships. More important than anything, he shaped young men's lives beyond the football field. He was known for hard work, pride, dedication, determination and never settling for less than the best. Then moving the bar further to be even better. It is our goal as Cubs to honor his legacy and life in our school and community. For athletics, we have cross country. This year has been great. We've seen improved attendance and participation with the athletes. We had a fundraiser car wash where we raised money to go to Clan Beach meet and the kids got to run on the beach, which was pretty awesome for all of them. We have two individual boys that qualified and will run at the state meet this year on November twenty ninth. Last night, girls tennis had the opportunity to get recognition at the Anderson City Hall. We finished the season off with winning the twenty twenty five Northern Athletic League team champion as well as being the NSDIF team finalist runner up. With four of our girls making it to the NLA all league champions for doubles and three of which made it to the NLA league singles. Joining all dominance at the NAL tournament. In the double bracket with sixteen doubles teams, the Anderson girls advanced in both number, number one and two doubles teams into the finals. Where they played each other for the title. It is highly unusual for the team to advance two of its own teams into the finals. At this tournament because it means that our number two beat team beats the rest of the league's number one team. Our girls' basketball team held tryouts and has started practice. We have a new varsity assistant coach, Megan Gum. We also have a new JV and freshman coach who comes from division one background, both playing and coaching. We're really looking forward to the season and are excited to build up younger players and teams. This boys, this year's boys basketball has enough boys coming to the court to create an all-boys freshman team. The boys JV and varsity just wrapped up their tryouts with thirteen boys making each team. The girls' soccer team is starting out strong with new girls joining the team as well as many returning players on the roster. Our returning players are exceptional. This will be most hopeful as many of our newer team members are freshmen and sophomores who will be competing at the varsity level. The wrestling team has six returning state qualifiers and four state ranked wrestlers, two boys and two girls. The girls' team is doing well with ten girls. Filling in each weight class might be difficult, but there are a lot of quality wrestlers in the room. There are also elite returning wrestlers. We have a lot of inexperienced but high potential future Cubs wrestlers. We're excited for the season. Anderson High School cheer team just had the opportunity to begin at the end of football season. Since football season is officially over, up next is basketball season. This year, they are switching it up by doing a cheer spirit season. This is where cheer is doing parades, basketball games, hosting mini camps and competitions. Anderson SFA has a successful start to the fall season. In late October, ten of our members traveled to the National SFA Convention. Spending a week visiting agriculture operations, history sites and museums across seven states. They attended conference sessions, heard from national officers and motivational speakers, participated in a park cleanup and exploitation college and career fair. Earlier this month, our officer team took first place at the Shasta sectional opening and closing competition at West Valley High School. And Lars Wold was named outstanding sentinel. Today, we hosted our November chapter meeting with eighty five members in attendance where forty seven sophomores received their chapter SFA degree. Afterwards, we held a movie event with forty members in attendance. We are currently selling hog raffle tickets for ten dollars each. With a chance to win a hog raised from our school farm, cut and wrapped for your freezer. The drawing will take place on December fifth. Contact an Anderson SFA advisor or member to purchase tickets. Lastly, the Anderson SFA tree lot opens Sunday, November thirtieth at noon. And will be open daily from eight AM to eight PM until we sell out. This is one of our biggest fundraisers helping to support student leadership events, conferences and trips. We typically sell out within a week, so don't miss out. Leadership, we have a lot of upcoming spirit days, including flannel Friday this Friday to kick off November break. We are also working hard on our, on Christmas spirit week posters, winter wonderland wideout, Christmas characters, Grinch Day, Code Red Christmas and Christmas sweaters. We also have a rally coming up on December fifth to honor winter sports team. Performing arts. Music, Christmas and Anderson Light Parade is on Sunday, November thirtieth at five thirty PM. Also, the winter concert is on December fourth at seven PM. We would love to see you there. Theater, still magnolias, this fall semester's play is getting ready for its performance. This play uses three actors from Anderson High, two from West Valley High and one from Anderson New Tech. It tells the story of six women living in a small Louisiana town and the way that over three years. They navigate life's challenges from laughter and gossip to tragedy. These six young ladies have been working very hard since, since September and are very excited to perform in front of a live audience. The play will run Thursday, December eleventh at six thirty PM and Saturday, December thirteenth at two PM and seven PM. Ticket prices are nine dollars for students and twelve dollars for adults. All tickets can be purchased at the door. Yearbooks have sold fifty nine percent of yearbook stock. They are on track to meet the first deadline, which is a submission of forty four pages. Ms. Weber is having a lot of fun and making big waves in the yearbook class this year. This is her first year teaching yearbook. Cub Connection is working with Key Club for a canned food drive, making food boxes for our own families who need some help this holiday season. In December, they are collaborating again to do a tour drive. For staff, Mr. Stout and Ms. Moss organized a staff Friendsgiving on Tuesday in Mr. Stout's room. Stout said the food was amazing and noted that they are really glad to be doing monthly staff hot looks where they can enjoy each other's company. Are there any questions? All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Abby Correa and I'm a senior at North Valley High School. I'm excited to share a few updates about Bulldog's backyard, our after-school program. The program has been doing really well. Our recent lights on event posted thirty two students and several guests from Shasta County Office of Education. On a typical, typical day, we are averaging around twenty five percent of our student population. Tomorrow, November twentieth, we are hosting our first Friendsgiving. We've partnered with our cafeteria staff to provide a traditional Thanksgiving dinner for our entire student body. We are expecting a great turnout. We also are looking forward to partnering with Toys from the Heart to support our four families from North Valley and Anderson Community Day School. This program provides gifts for every child in the household, not just the students who attend our school. We're also very proud to share our attendance improvement at North Valley. When comparing this fall of twenty twenty five to last fall of twenty twenty four, the number of students attending school at least. At least seventy percent of the time has increased from seventeen students to fifty seven, a forty eight percent improvement. Many factors have helped make this possible. But one of the most effective has been the daily credit opportunity policy implemented at the start of this school year. Students can earn daily credit for showing up and completing their work, which has created consistent expectations and culture of daily accountability. We are incredibly proud of our teachers for faithfully implementing the system. And even more proud of our students for showing up, engaging in the process and taking ownership of their success. Expectations have been raised and students are meeting those expectations. This progress reflects their hard work and commitment and we look forward to continuing this positive trend throughout the school year. Any questions? Any questions?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Bolinger, and I'm serving as our A S B Vice President of West Valley High School. I'm speaking on behalf of Emmy, who wasn't able to make it tonight. Since hearing from Emmy, our school has had homecoming, many sports events, and fundraisers. We have a lot of upcoming plans that I'm very excited to share with you today. Our volleyball team ended their season twenty-five seconds. They beat Roseville in the first round of state playoffs, but they sadly lost to Ripson Christian in the second round of playoffs. Two players, Vanessa Matthews and Command Simmons, will be playing in the All-Star volleyball game. Our girls' golf team finished second overall in Northern Athletic League, and had three girls, Brooklyn Robertson, Kelsey Rogow, Martha Monet, represent the N A L at-section champions. Our tennis and swim team ended up having a great season, and they already are planning on how to make next year's season better. Our football team has had a great season, ending seven to four overall. They sadly lost to Orland in the playoffs. Our football team is already working hard for next season to make it even better. Our cross-country team brought home the N A L League Championship, first-place title for varsity boys, varsity girls, and J V boys. It's been ten years since we've won. What an amazing accomplishment for them. Connor Murphy finished first in the J V Boys Race. We had seven All-League recipients. Both our varsity teams won D four section championships, and our coach, Ms. Sreck, was named the Northern Section Honored Coach. The cross-country state race will be held in Fresno in a couple of weeks. Representing our school is Isaiah Larssable, Elijah Anderson, Ethan Rothos, Derek Rulon, Gideon Gable, Lane Cruz, Jocelyn Bakerly, Scarlett Ammon, Logan Cruz, Aubrey Love, and Eva Scott. We wish them the best of luck. They will do amazing. Our girls' and boys' basketball season has started. They have been working very hard to prepare for this season. They have their first game of the season, Pink Out, at West Valley on Saturday, November twenty-ninth, in Goodwill. We can't wait to cheer all levels on throughout their season. Our soccer team are also very excited to start their season. They will be starting their games early December and can't wait to watch how far they go this season. Our wrestling team has eagerly waited to start. They have been working out and had practices to prepare for this season. They are having a scrimmage tonight at Courtney with many invitationals and tournaments coming up. We are especially looking forward to their duel against Orland on December tenth. Our leadership class has great plans for that night to cheer them on. Our S F A program has had an amazing year so far, with great plans ahead. In November, members were able to tie an officer or an advisor to raise money for our chapter. Our S F A team has had two teams representing at opening and closing Shasta Section Competition. We had many members receive awards at this ceremony, and we are very proud of everything they are doing to represent our school. Our leadership class has been working very hard this school year. We have planned many dances, crazy crew activities, and events to get our students involved. Right now, we are currently having our canned food drive. We partnered with theater schools so we can raise the most cans possible. Each grade is competing for the most ounces, and the winner will get lunch from a food truck. We are starting to plan our Christmas carnival, which was a huge hit last year. We can't wait to see everything come together this year. We are excited to keep planning crazy crew themes to support all of our amazing teams that represent our school. Thank you very much for your time and all the amazing opportunities students get to experience that I'm able to speak on the behalf of tonight. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're on to three-five recognition of October Students of the Month. Cody Alculea, North Valley High School.
Well, what can I say about Cody? He is such a sweet man, and we really appreciate having him on campus. And ever since finding out that he was going to be a dad, he's really pushed through, and he really wants to succeed and build a better life for his child, and we're just so very proud of him.
Brian Tripolla, Anderson New Tech.
Good evening, guys. This is Brian Tripolla. He's a junior at Anderson New Tech. He's been there all three years and always been a good kid. But this year, we have really been able to just celebrate this growth and commitment, especially to R O P., but to his future. It's been a great progression. I have some comments and some notes from some teachers, because they're very proud of how Brian, and one of which, Mr. Morphy, who is actually here. It's been inspiring to watch Brian grow into a polite, considerate young man who carries himself with sincerity, politeness, and humility during his time at New Tech. Brian faces the challenges that high school students encounter every day, continues to meet each one with courage, hard work, and determination. Proud of the person he is becoming. And from Mr. Peterson, who's an advisory teacher, government teacher, and one of his favorite people. Brian's a wonderful young man, always seeking me out to ask how my day is going, genuinely wants to connect. Been very passionate about his future in firefighting and wanting to make his family and teachers proud at New Tech. The choices he has made this year and moving forward from some past mistakes show that he is dedicated and takes feedback and learns from his past. He has an amazing future ahead of him. So glad that I've been part of the process. He's one of the best people to see every day. And from Ms. Dowdge, our program coordinator, Brian's an exceptional young man to have in our school community. Typically is quite soft-spoken, but it's truly delightful to witness his enthusiasm when he discusses his firefighting R O P. class. I'm excited to witness his ongoing growth and discover his future. Brian could have made a lot of choices, like a lot of our students, and his commitment to his future, to his family, and the respect that he shows to everyone is what we hope all of our students do. So, congratulations.
So, the Students of the Month are nominated by your teachers. And so each month, we have a different one from the school. So, out of the schools, you guys were nominated. So, that's a really big deal for the district. So, Justin Burney owns It's Turkey. So, he donated turkey to you guys because he felt it's really important, the effort you're making. So, congratulations. Four point one, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items? Consent items. Five-one, five-two, five-three, and five-four. Does anybody want to have any issues removed from the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-one, five-two, five-three, five-four, all pass. Six-one, there was no items removed from the consent agenda? Six-two, provide... Six-two is just informational. Provide notice to the date, time, and location of the annual organization meeting of the board. Six-three, discussion item. We can do discussion, or we can action. Review sample administration administrative regulation regarding the caregivers authorization application process.
You'll table it?
Yeah, we definitely, I think, should table it. Just since this is Jackie's thing. I don't know if you guys have any questions or want to discuss it, or...
I'm fine to table it.
I'll make a motion to table?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
So, we're going to table six-three? Six-four, school calendar for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year.
There was one error on there, and it's Memorial Day. I had it marked a week before. It's supposed to move to May thirty-first, so that one needs to be amended.
What's the date going to be?
May thirty-first.
So, I make a motion to approve the calendar with that correction. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six-four, Patrick? Six-five? We discussed with Brian, Mr. Parker, that we wanted to promote our C T E program, so we have two different proposals to look at.
Yeah, if you looked at them, they're very, very extreme. One's very expensive, and one's very inexpensive. I'm not sure if the lower one really undertook, nothing we wanted in the scope of it. I could probably go back and try and find some other bids, maybe find another little one, or maybe ask the N B S medias to clarify that their bids encompass what we want. So, stuff you got, I mean, if you want to approve one, now you can, or you can give me direction on to pursue further.
I actually have some questions on the Pacific Sky one. So, I really liked their portfolio, I will say that. There was a couple videos that they've done for Shasta College. One of them was titled "Shasta College Fall 2018", and it was pretty much like, I think, what we're looking for. Their tagline was "More programs, more possibilities", so I really liked that. I don't know if you can feel that or if you can. I liked it. It was, I want to say, like thirty-something seconds. It was really short, but it was just really...
The Pacific Sky is very good. They, while I was specifically asking, I haven't created a video for the high school. We should show it in the theater near us. Supermole All-Team, we had offered at the high school. They've done videos recording, high school district, Shasta College, they've been there for a while, and they're pretty polished.
Yeah, yeah, and that was on their website and their portfolio. The questions that I've had were, in their contract, it says that under the video production specifics, the creative pre-production meetings with the client. So, I was just curious, like, do they have... Yep, they'll get off. So, under video production specifics, it says the creative pre-production meetings with the client. And I wouldn't, it didn't specify how many meetings we get with them to, you know, do our creative thing, and then it doesn't state. It says that there, when there are changes to the contract after, you know, forty-eight hours approval, it says there's a hundred dollar per hour fee, but it didn't say... That was only, let me go back to the specifics. Unless otherwise specified in this agreement, deliverables including a maximum of one revision at no cost, further changes will require a signed change order with additional fees. But it doesn't say what amount. That's under number twelve, change of scope of services. So, I wasn't sure if it's like a per-hour charge or if it's per-change.
I imagine how much you change. You change everything, it might be more, it might be less, like, five per-hour fee. I can find out.
It shows their per-hour fee, just for fixing, like, typographical errors and misspellings of a hundred dollars an hour.
Well, if they make the errors, they're not going to charge us, correct that.
Right, if it's our error, though, like, if we're handing over materials and whatnot. So, with that, you know, misspellings being a hundred dollars an hour. If the scope of services change, what is that charge going to look like?
Like my bill.
Yeah, so just curious, basically, on what the, you know, under the video production specifics, how many meetings do we get before they actually run with the idea? Sometimes they'll give you one consultation, and then one review, and then forty-eight hours to review what they've produced. You know what I mean? So, I try to know, like, what...
Okay. I've already mentioned one, if anyone no charge told them what we're looking for. They should be, have previously done something very similar, recording all their C T E pathways. Do you know if there are two bids in there? Ones for the longer video or the shorter, short, word on each C T E pathway?
There's three.
Pardon me?
There's three options.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, one of them's full. And then one of them is a long video in each one or a short video? And one of them is combine those two options together?
Yeah, you're right.
Okay, that's why I meant the two options.
Yeah, yeah.
I just have a question. All this is for the production of this video. Has anybody checked on how much it's going to cost to produce and actually send them out? How are we sending them out? TV, radio, well, obviously there's video, so it couldn't be radio, but that's going to cost a lot of money at the time.
Right now, the plan is to put it on our websites. So, if parents are browsing around for tools, they can click on and see if a video will be offered.
Yeah, there's social media. And like Facebook, too, and stuff like that.
Yeah, Lisa can pull this all out, though. Lisa, you want to talk about what's going to be on Facebook?
Advertising on, advertising on social media is very inexpensive. But Mr. Mason and I used to do it periodically. It'd probably be like, we'd set our budget at around two hundred dollars, and it would reach twenty thousand people in a week. It's really inexpensive. It lets you kind of set your own budget. You can spend five dollars, you can spend fifteen thousand dollars. It's a huge rate, but you can do a lot with a little bit of money on social media.
I think it would make more sense if we focused advertising on social media versus, like, local stations and whatnot. I think kids are on social media more, that's just reaching the broader market.
Would you like me to get some more chats, see if I can find some other companies? I mean, Pacific Sky is local, they're in Redding, and then the other gentleman has his own company, he's also local. I could get, you reach outside the community and try and find some different bids. What are your thoughts?
I like the idea of them being local, and I like their work. So, I think for me, it's a matter of choosing a path, choosing options. And what line items for our budget is coming out of?
I think that it would most likely come out of the district level if we're trying to, you know, do advertising across the district, not just one site specific, which we have reserves for.
So, what would be, I mean, the last option, where you take the first two options together, you get each pathway is given like five minutes, five-minute video? Is that completely out of the question, let them out? And it's not whether or not we want to spend that kind of money, it's just do we even have them, like...
I think the effectiveness, when I know the Pacific Sky, they even invented a really long video, people won't watch the whole thing. They want a short, brief clip, just something to catch their attention on social media.
Yeah.
I kind of like the less expensive one. Try it, see what we get for it, because it's not a lot of money, and see, see what we think. He might do more if we want more and not cost us a lot, too. We could talk and see if he would charge for these types of things that Pacific Sky would, or if he'd work with us more, and since he is newer, build it with us. I think it'd be kind of taking advantage of little, but it would help. I think it'd be, kind of taking advantage of little, but it would help that growth maybe in a way too, if he doesn't understand that you're thinking what he's getting into. It would be trial, he would, it'd be a growth opportunity, and his work seems good to me for what we're looking for, and it wouldn't be a big cash outlay if we didn't get the results we wanted. Whereas the other, if we didn't get the results we wanted, it's a lot of money.
Here's my thought on that one.
Need direction from you guys?
What do you think, Alana?
I'm kind of a Stacy, like, going for maybe the, the less expensive, kind of seeing what he can do us, or at least going back to him and getting clarification, see if he is going to meet our needs first before we go with such a high-priced option. And there's no other local companies, this is gonna end?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because I wouldn't be opposed to also seeing that kind of movement range, can bid too, if we can get one.
There was one other young man who was like graduate, and I reached out to him.
Was it Kate, was it Kate?
Yeah, but he, he took a full-time job at City Redding, so he did have time to do it.
So I have two that wanna maybe reach out to lower bid and get clarifications.
Yeah, before we make a final decision, maybe to. Maybe can we show him, Sky, Pacific Sky, and this is, so this is the company that you're competing against, at least the work that they're producing or putting out, so at least he has an understanding, or show him some of the Shasta College videos to say this is what we're looking for, can you do this? So it's very, very specific and clear that this is, you know, we're looking for something to be, you know, pretty similar.
Well, and Pacific Sky might have a lot more overhead too in their business that they have to charge for, whereas he probably doesn't. So they probably bill for their time, a lot more per time and add a lot more profit to it and.
Right.
Yeah. Costs that they have to cover, whereas he just has his costs himself. He doesn't have employees, is what I'm thinking, why his baseline could be less expensive also. That's just my thought on it, I don't, I don't know.
Another thought too, when we were visiting the ROP school site, was there, can't remember the gentleman's name, do you remember the guy that we met who was the computer teacher? He used to be a media producer, a manager, something like that. And I'm wondering, you know, can we make this some kind of like a senior project or something, the students produce it themselves in-house?
That's a cool idea, yeah.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I like that idea, keep it in-house.
Yeah, board meeting next, week after Thanksgiving, we should bring it up there.
I mean, I remember mentioning it to him, and he said he would be interested.
He didn't talk about it, he wasn't talking about it. Surely you happen to know his name?
No, I don't know, that's fairly new, I've heard a couple of news.
So maybe we do that.
I can try.
And then table these proposals for now.
If you want to do.
I motion to table these proposals, and then wait and see what we get back from the ROP computer teacher.
And do you want me also to reach out to the, the one lower bid here and clarify if you understand what we're looking for?
Please. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The six-five is tabled. Six-six, discussion?
I'm gonna let Lisa answer questions on this. I've reached out to, it's kind of called Aptige, and when Lisa came back, we, we talked about it, and we had a couple Zoom meetings with this company. It's, it's very promising, goes along with your guys' goal to have it have a district. A lot higher than you, you run an app, you click on the app and it takes you to a different website. This thing is, is a district branded app. They have four sites too. It's very user-friendly, and we're currently, they also do a website. We're currently in a contract with a different website vendor, but this company said they would buy out that contract, so it wouldn't cost us any money to switch over. I'm gonna let Lisa answer any questions we have about it or talk more about it.
Question?
Okay, I can just share what I learned about it. So I know we just did just switch website providers, but this was presented to me, and I do feel like it may be in our best interest to switch again. It kind of solves a lot of problems that we're having where all these different platforms are saying different versions of the same message, like a leadership teacher is putting out this message, and then a secretary is putting out this message, trying to get the same message, but, you know, things get stripped from one person to another. This thing kind of puts everything, where you, when you post something, you post it across all the platforms, you can send it in the text, a phone call, so, all your social media accounts, your website, and it does offer an app, which I do think is appealing to parents and kids. It's not just like a mobile version of a website, it's an actual app, so everything that we put on to the website goes into an app, push it on your phone, like bus routes, meals, athletic schedules, all that thing, all of that goes into an app. It also helps build newsletters, it's kind of like a drag-and-drop of stuff that's on your website or your recent social media posts, you can drop it into a newsletter, so you're not redoing it again, like that could be something else's job, it kind of makes it that everything stays more consistent and uniform, and more, it's simplified as how to get that message across, where one parent may be looking on social media, and the other one just gets the text messages, they're all anything then.
Yeah. Am I correct here, it says that it also supports Aries?
Yes, it does talk to Aries, so that the phone numbers, all that kind of stuff come out of that, so you can.
So like, can parents do grade checks through there?
I would think that would just be in the app, Aries does have its own app, so I don't think that they could check that through this. This is more of, like, the content management system, like a CMS for a website into an app. But it allows you to do push notifications out to parents to tell them something, but teachers wouldn't be able to.
So like, my question would be, is, like, if a parent has notifications set up, like, my kid's grade dropped below six, or something like that, can that set up through Aries? And Aries connects to this, would that alert come through this app?
Someone would have to send it, it wouldn't probably just automatically notify you that the grade dropped, but if a teacher said, I need to reach out to this parent, the teachers can communicate with you through it, kind of like how Aries Parents Square does. And it, it can be a two-way communication, but administration would have oversight of it, so that you're not just texting your parent, it's all through a system, you know, that, that we would have access to view.
There, there would be a site moderator grid site, but what I like about it is, let's say, Mr. Bickney's at a wrestling match, you know, someone gets a pan over, or a rival on it, they can take a picture and upload it to what, to, to Aries, communicate to Facebook, whatever it was.
On Instagram?
Um, a live feed and a notification through the app itself, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, a text message, an audio message, and an email. They have all the options in one button.
One button gives all that, all those things. Any parent would have an app, would see that in me.
And you said that they'll buy out our, like, our contract?
They'll buy out our current website contract.
Kind of thing with them.
First they said no, and so they kept calling us, calling us, we asked, and they said yes.
Good job.
Then we asked for, what type of contract?
It works.
Thank you.
Uh, I motion to approve, we're taking action, right?
I think it was just for discussion.
Discussion.
Oh. We hadn't had a proposal of cost officially at that point, we have received it.
If you guys, you know, before, if we look at the official.
Okay.
Did, bring it, bring it back to you guys.
Six-seven. Mr. Booth, did you want to talk about this position?
We're asking for the addition of one maintenance specialist, one physician to be advertised using the current CSEA job approved job description and salary range. As you may know, here, we have, we have a maintenance crew of three guys that are really taking care of, one, two, three, four, five sites to include the district office, spread pretty thin, and then we had tried, was it this year, Mr. Parker?
Last year and beginning of this year.
So, last year and the beginning of this year, we tried to alleviate some of the burden that those, those guys were carrying by having the West Valley crew come over and take care of all the ed, and it's just that time of travel, back and forth, it, it, it just, it wasn't, it wasn't efficient at all. So this would be to add one additional here at Anderson, making a crew for, to, to be able to service all those sites. Mr. Parker, do you have anything else?
No, that's right on the money. They, these three guys take care of, you know, I actually did a toilet count, how many toilets are out there this year, how much edging, they take care of more stuff with older facilities, all the campuses over here, older than West Valley, and if it's not feasible for the West Valley maintenance crew to load up all their tools and equipment and drive out to Mark Valley and drive out to, you know, just not, so, we try to do it by year, year and a quarter, and first, I think this would be a more efficient way to go.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six-seven passes. Do we have any fellow comments over any of these? Six-eight is informational, local climate survey. Do we have any questions over that? Six-nine, recommendation for supplementary novel adoption, Angela Dashes.
Oh. So, um?
Um.
Whoops.
Sorry, I had a comment. I asked last time to get the book, to read it, because some of the reviews I saw online were a little concerning, with sexual content and whatnot, and so I actually read the first few chapters. And I came up with some alternatives. That's where I'm at with this. I, I think that the, the writing is definitely rich, but I think a little bit too graphic for juniors to read. And we had talked about, Mr. Booth, the possibility of taking excerpts from this book. If we were to approve it, that would be the only basis that I would approve this book utilization. But I did do some research, and there are several books that are for English honors AP classes that are very similar in writing and theme of this book, which don't have, like, the sexual content or the, the religion aspect and the way that they're, you know, pursuing Catholicism and things like that. So, I brought a list of alternatives. My vote is to not approve this book.
Is this something that, if parents had a concern, they could have their child opt out for a different, like, something or not?
You can certainly put that stipulation in there, yeah, there's, there is that, in fact, it's part of a policy that, anything that, I'm trying to think the right term, controversial issue that you could ask that prior to teaching that they do send out that parent notification and any request with, on a parent, we would, we would follow.
I just think that if we, if there are alternatives that have similar themes, I mean, this author, Franklin Court, even wrote, wrote another book called Teacher, which is less graphic. The problem of this book is it's having sexual graphic content, like, very descriptive. So I just don't think that's appropriate. He's not a bad writer, it's just, it's, I mean, as an adult, I can appreciate this book, but as a sixteen, seventeen-year-old, it's just, it seems a little too graphic, in my opinion, for us to support this as a supplemental curriculum. And there are so many other options out there, that, again, the, you know, students would be able to grasp the same things, the same concepts, the same complexities of, of characters. And a lot of them are like up and coming and becoming super popular. There was a book called Educated, that's an up and coming, popular book, Enrique's Journey, Hole in My Life, that's about a guy who made a lot of poor decisions and went to prison, selling drugs and all kinds of stuff and turned his life around. So all of these options are like redemptionary stories, but also dealing with the same themes of like having adolescent and, you know, family dysfunction and hardship and things like that. One thing that I thought, one, another option that I thought was really good was The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, and that's about a young boy who lives on reservation and grows up with some, you know, alcoholism and his family dysfunction and abuse and all different kinds of things, and I just thought it would be, you know, maybe more relatable in our community or something else versus this, this writing. There's a lot of other options out there that I think we could choose from, other than this one.
Well, Julie did make a motion, do they want seconded motion?
We made a motion to approve it?
Well, the fact that the department chair recommended it and lost sixteen, seventeen yards, not like they're living in the blind city anymore, they, in fact, live score hour of life, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
We have a person seconding the motion.
Motion to approve? No. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, three to one, six-nine passes. Six-ten, recommendation for supplemental novel adoption, hopefully Aptige. Some to approve?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Julie, did you vote?
Yep.
Yes, she voted, yes.
So, six-ten passes, four-zero. Six-eleven, recommendation for textbook adoption.
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Six-eleven passes, four-zero. Six-twelve, quarterly professional development report, it's informational. Does anybody have a question?
Looks like the teachers spend a lot of time traveling, learn, learn all these things, a lot of hours there.
Yeah, thank you so much, John, for putting that together.
You're welcome.
Super helpful.
And moving forward, just so you know, it will be a monthly, I just wanted to get caught up. It, though, I'll provide one for each month, so this is July through October, so next, we'll be in one month in arrears, but. So this is July through October, so next, we'll be in one month in arrears, but you'll have all of November next month. So moving forward.
Okay, cool.
Six thirteen, resolution for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year to transfer funds to the third maintenance fund. You want a motion to approve? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Six thirteen passes, four zero. Seven one, ECA and CTA rep comments?
CTA group?
I'm not there.
What you doing?
Um, yeah. Um, I, I was, I'm not, I'm not officially representing CTA, but I have to say, uh, I do appreciate, uh, the positive negotiations that we just, uh, finished up with. Things are going well, teachers are, are having a good time. I mean, you guys have seen, we're, we're off to a great start for the school year and so, I'm excited to see it move forward. And I really appreciate the things that the board's doing as well as the, the district office is doing in, in getting some, uh, the word out about our programs and, and really working towards trying to fix this sleep hole we have with, you know, declining enrollment and things like that. I, I know everyone's dealing with dancing county, but trying to find ways that, that Anderson High School District can, can do that. I think it's a great step forward, so.
You not getting yelled at?
I don't have anything to yell about, so. Things are going great in my house, so.
I just want to also acknowledge Coach Reed, um, he, he was a, a teacher and coach when I was a student here. One of my regrets in life is not playing sports. I played freshman year of football, I was starting my receiver. And Steve Bacon played, I was coaching some basketball, I was a coach on basketball. And I didn't play for him, I regret it. And I, I used to use that as an example when I used to coach, I'd tell my kids, play all the sports you can. Don't try and, you know, just pick one sport, cause most of us aren't going pro. So don't pick one sport, just have fun playing all the sports, so. Bob was a great man and, uh, and we dearly, dearly miss for the community. The second thing I want to say, um, also in mind of what Stephen said, I, I appreciate the positive format negotiations, it was very good this year. I, I think this is a record in how fast we settled, um, so I, I appreciate your hard work in that too. Stephen was kind of a lead negotiator in, in the room and, uh, he did a great, a great job, did a great job. And finally, um, for a while, Jennifer and I were kind of white knuckling it. But our all-ten program got audited for attendance and there were some pretty negative findings. And the district reports said we could have lost almost a million dollars in ADA. And our rookie all-ten director came in, Megan McConaughey. And saved the day. She spent hours and hours and hours with the teachers, um, to rectify the problem and we got confirmation today that we're getting full ADAs in March. So, very good. Oh wait, one more thing, we hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, happy Thanksgiving.
Good luck.
Did you go to the national convention?
I did, yeah.
Okay, so.
Um, when I competed, I was going to the semifinals and that was where I, that's where I did it.
You choked?
What?
You choked?
No, I thought I did really good, but I didn't, so I'm happy with how I did.
Do you have your American degree?
When you get that, uh, you have it in high school.
So how close are you? Will you, are you going, you're gonna apply for it?
Yeah, I'm gonna apply for it, but I, that doesn't even talk to my India, just want a way to help, yeah.
Was that the first time you've been to Indianapolis?
Yeah.
What about all those side trips you got to see, a lot of things, did you enjoy that?
We, we went to the Speedway and that was, that'd be very sore.
A lot of people, yeah, at the, uh, the convention, yeah, wow.
Have any comments? Nope. All right.